Okay, good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council regular meeting Wednesday, December 16th, 2020, the go-to meeting. At this point, we will do the pledge and ask Dennis to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
We will move on now to number two. And again, so just so we don't have any feedback or anything, if you're not talking at any given time, can you please go on mute so that we don't get any back noises? Next, we'll move on to number two, which is visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors that would like to be recognized?
I'll be all that up.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, this point, number three, which the approval of the minutes for the December 2nd, 2020 meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Make that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Thank you. Item number four, which is appointments and reappointments. So there's two on the agenda for this evening. One is a replacement for an elected seat, which is Tom Schultz, Democrat on the zoning board of appeals, alternate seat until December 2021. So at this point, we look for a motion to appoint Tom Schultz to the alternate seat on the zoning board of appeals until November 2021.
Make that motion.
Sound moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Thank you. Next is John Olson, Democrat, and we're looking to appoint him to an open seat on the Fairlight Commission for a term until June 30th, 2024. A motion to appoint John.
Sound moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Thank you. Move on to item number five now, which would be the Senior Resource Advisory Committee recommendation. So first, before we get into this, obviously, everybody's got a copy of the report that they completed on this. I do at this time want to obviously publicly thank the whole committee, Shelby Alueta, Mike Corniac, Ethel DeBona, Elizabeth Goldstein, Phyllis McGrath, and Dolly Mizetti for all of your work on this. We greatly appreciate all the work and time that you put into getting this done. It's a big part of what we're trying to do here in town, and we appreciate all your hard work. What we'll do as a council, my feeling is let them go forth and present to us their findings and go through kind of what they have here. And then the council, at our next meeting, we can further discuss what's been put forth to us, so we can kind of go through everything else that we have. And then, obviously, at that point, if there's no further need for the committee, we could just ban the committee at that time, or if we want to keep it open, we can make that decision at the next meeting. So at this point, I guess Shelby, you're going to be the one talking? Yeah, so move to Shelby and have her go through the report that we have in front of us.
Okay, so, um, so do you want me to go through it point by point, or so I started to prepare kind of an overview and I can?
Yeah, I mean, an overview is great because we have the whole written report that you have to kind of just overview of what you guys went through.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so, so each committee member had a unique perspective, right, as we approached the Town Council's charge and the various issues facing Clinton seniors. And in the end, we all agreed that Clinton seniors deserve and need more from our town. So we don't want to kick the can any further, and instead, we respectfully request that Clinton take incremental informed steps toward a senior center in Clinton. So in that document that you all have, we asked with the start of the fiscal, the next fiscal year, that Clinton hires a part-time program director under the direct supervision and guidance of the town manager. We specifically asked that the new employee would work Monday through Friday, like mornings, nine to 12, in an office in the Chamber of Commerce building, so that they could be sort of spack between human services and the town manager's office and sort of be that intermediary. We also hope that that position would be responsible for coordinating and communicating all the existing programs within Clinton. As you know, the programs within Clinton are varied and diverse and in all sorts of places. So there's Bingo, and there's the library, and there's the actuary, and there's, we have a good percentage of Clinton seniors that go to Westbrook. And so we feel like seniors need someone who's gonna centralize that communication. So obviously, COVID has affected every single area of everything, specifically senior centers. And we know that it's going to be some time before seniors can safely gather in person. But even so, we would like you to hire someone so that they could get started. This new person, it's kind of a blessing in disguise, because it would allow the new person time to get familiar with the current programming that's offered to Clinton seniors in the greater Clinton area. It would allow them time to ramp up. It would allow them time to figure out where they fit into Clinton in general. And then we have this other key part at the end of our recommendation that we are respectfully requesting, that the Clinton Town Council create a formal committee or a commission such as a senior services commission. And that would serve, hopefully, serve as an advisory group that would assist the town manager and assist staff in the development and the coordination and the implementation of all those programs that we're hoping would be developed for seniors. And that that commission would continue to advocate on behalf of Clinton senior residents. We feel like this committee was really important, and we rolled up our sleeves and dug in and did what we needed to do, but there really needs to be something that goes forward. You alluded to that a little bit, Chris, that there needs to be Clinton's citizens involved in what's going to happen going forward, and especially because it's going to hopefully be incremental, that there would be citizens involved in the decision-making going forward.
Thank you, Shelby.
You're welcome.
Is anybody on the council? So I guess at this point, maybe we'll open up to the council members to see if we have any specific questions that they have now, so that it would be helpful, so that when we're discussing this at our next meeting, if there's anything you want more clarification on, you know, just some background on any things that they came up with within their report. So if there's any council members that have any comments?
Yes, Chris, first of all, thank you to the committee members. Wonderful work, great research. It's very clear that every member here was able to put in a lot of time and a lot of effort. We're very grateful for that. Were there particular senior centers that you found that we could eventually perhaps model ourselves after? I know I've heard some fairly decent things about Westbrook. Would there be places in the area where you'd say this is eventually where we might want to go? I know, Shelby, you said it's incremental. But is there a long-term vision that you would recommend to us where we might go?
Um, I don't know that we had, we sort of settled on a place that we thought you would model after. We talked to a lot of senior centers. I do know that Westbrook, 13% of their visitors are Clinton seniors. So Westbrook clearly, I mean, they have proximity to Clinton, but they clearly get a lot of our seniors going. Our seniors enjoy their programming, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
Um, Shelby, I, oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
You go first, Carol.
Thank you. Shelby, I have a question about why you would feel that this would be best served under the direct supervision and guidance of the town manager? Because to me, it seems as though this is a social services project, that this is something that serves the community. And whereas the town manager's job is generally oversight and management, he, this, this is more in the arena of a social situation. Why would you not recommend putting it in that? To me, it seems like that's a no-brainer to put it in there.
So surprisingly, a lot of towns don't do that. So in our research, I would actually, I couldn't even give you a figure, but it's well over 35 or 40% of towns don't have it under senior, under human services. They either have it under Park and Rec, like Guilford, for example, it's under the Park and Rec director.
Okay, well, I don't have a problem with that either.
Sort of see, sort of fits. I don't, I don't know that I can point to, I don't know if any of the other committee members can point to why we thought it fit there, just the way that our human services department is structured, and then with the fact that the programming is all over town, we thought that in the beginning, at least, it would just would be better suited to start under the town manager.
I'm just thinking with all the responsibilities that the town manager has on his plate from, to begin with, to add something, a brand-new project with all these diverse elements, might, it would be better served under a commission, committee, department that already has that expressed. Like this on a park and rec, too. That seems very natural.
So I would argue that with our town politics, so I would argue with our town politics and the way that our existing services just to seniors exist, that it's so varied, that we need somebody to take it, bring it in, figure out what it is, and then place it somewhere where it's appropriate.
Well, and, well, another one of my, one of my-
Discuss that more amongst the council members.
Right.
The council, we can discuss that, obviously, and give direction to that. So I mean, that would be our discussion.
Particular reason for that, so?
That was, that was why, that was our thinking. It's just there's so many places in Clinton that already have little bits of ownership, that it needed somebody to shepherd it into its next form of being.
Yes, may I ask a question? Shelby, and the whole group, have you talked to or worked with the YMCA at all in Westbrook? I know they were trying, and I'm somewhat involved, trying to help them fundraise to really expand, and their real thrust is the seniors. That dominates their day. And that's what they're trying to focus in on for their growth. Again, remember the silver sneakers that we all get to Medicare to get these things called silver sneakers, which you get to go there. But have you worked with them at all? Have you spoke to them?
So we did, this committee did not speak directly with the YMCA. The previous committee from 2019 did interact with the YMCA and get numbers and census information from them. So we did not. We relied on the previous research. Our point really was that Clinton seniors don't necessarily, or shouldn't necessarily have to drive outside of Clinton, that we have the same numbers that other surrounding towns have that have senior centers that support their seniors directly in town. That's where we were coming from.
Christine Gopiel, when I had met with YMCA, myself and Elizabeth Goldstein had met with them, they did provide substantial data on the programming that Clinton residents do utilize through the YMCA. And so that's something we'll need to really look at, and whether or not that's the type of programming we can bring over to Clinton, should we expand services. So I think it's definitely useful information for us to be aware of.
We, we did cite in our document that we, the numbers that had been previously provided, and there were about 600 Clinton participants at the YMCA. Okay.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay, well, good. All right. So again, thank you so much, everybody on the committee for your hard work. We do appreciate it. It gives us a lot to obviously deal with going forward and gives us the opportunity to put something in place going forward and making sure that this does come to fruition. So thank you again for all of your work. We really do appreciate it.
Great job. Thank you.
Well done.
And again, so what we'll do is we'll keep this on the agenda for the next meeting for us, so we'll discuss it further amongst the council members and see how we want to proceed with with what they've provided to us. All right, so there we go. Thank you for all of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Shelby.
We will now move on to number six, the 2020 tax abatement list. Again, same as last year, we're just looking for a motion to approve this tax assessment list that has been provided to all the council members. So more-
Is there any?
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, is there anybody from the, oh, is there anybody from the fire department here to explain to new members how this abatement works, what the criteria is to receive the abatement? Because it's pretty strict, it's pretty strict criteria. Excuse me?
Michael's on the call. Yeah.
He hasn't turned his microphone on. I don't know if he wants to talk, I think.
Call them out.
Yeah, we, we have a minimum set of requirements that you have to do in order to be eligible for the tax abatement. It's like over 50 calls, 10 drills, a certain amount of meetings, work details, and fundraisers. The other thing with it, too, is with COVID and the reduced response, it made it a little more difficult. But a lot of people are still able to make it.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up would be the Finance Director's Report. Sue?
Hi, everybody. You have my report. I'll just go over some of the highlights for November. Total revenues for November were 1.8 million. One quarter of the budgeted ECS revenues of 1.298 million was included in that, as well as tax revenues of 376,000 and other town service revenues of 114,000. The ECS is the amount that we expected. So as of now, we're receiving what was budgeted. So that's a good sign. The other town services revenues of 114,000 included 51,000 for the town clerk, mainly the real estate conveyance taxes, 42,000 for the building fees, and 21 for the police contractual. We also received in November the 24,000 that, from the state, under the COVID-related expense reimbursement program, the CRF fund that we incurred as of June 30. We also will be receiving, we did receive the FEMA reimbursement as well in December. You'll see that on the next month's report. At this time, the revenues that I'm forecasting to be short of budget for the full year are the town building and Wassam rentals and investment income. These areas will be made up by the revenue areas that are forecast to have favorable variances, which are the ones that we continue to talk about, which are the strong real estate conveyance taxes, the building fees, and again, the police contractual fees. The expense side, the November expenses, nothing unusual there. They were 4.2 million. 3.3 of that included the transfers to the Board of Ed. The remaining 700,000 was really the fixed expenses for the salaries and other contractuals. There's other, no change in the contingency that remains at 250,000, knowing that a portion of that's going to be reserved for the contract settlements, as we've talked about before, and the fund balance remains unchanged. It's a 13.92% based on the June 19 numbers. We're still waiting for the June 20 numbers. We have, I'm still waiting for the financial statements for June of 20 to be presented. The, we did receive an audit extension to June, January 31st. It was at the request of the partner. So hopefully, we'll be getting something soon on that. The ongoing projects that we have are working on the ban, the financing is coming up in February, and on the 22 budget, we've started accumulating that information as well. I did want to mention, and it's in the report, that the town recently has notified that we did receive the, for the 2019 financials, the certificate of achievement in excellence for financial reporting. It's the second year in a row that the town's received that. It's a very positive reflection on the town, especially when presenting to rating agencies, as it's recognizing that the financial information is very fairly presented and goes beyond the minimum reporting requirement. So that's a real plus for the town as well. That's a quick summary of my report, if you have any questions.
Thanks, Sue. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Anyway, on page two, under other, investment balances and interest income, the town had a net cash flow, outflow for November of 3 million, as unrestricted investments decreased to 2.1 million, from the October balances of 24 million. Can you, what does that mean?
That just means that we, more cash went out the door than came in, which is what happens in our budgeting situation.
Okay, all right. So this is, okay, thank you.
Spend $3 million net for the month of November. Out.
Just wondering. Christine Gopiel. Christine Gopiel, I just want to thank Sue for all she's done to bring the stability to that office. We've had some inconsistency over many years, and I think that recognition certainly shows what you've done with the office and reporting, Sue. So thank you.
I appreciate that, Christine. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Thanks again, Sue. We will now move on to Chairman's Report. Just a couple of quick things. The website is finalized. It's finished. It is live. Thank you again to Mary for all of her hard work in getting this and putting this together. So please take a look at that. We will be posting something and putting out a message from the town's office, letting everybody know that we do have a new updated website and kind of go through some of the new features that are associated with the website, so people can hopefully get familiarized with that, so that they can better utilize that and be a little bit more helpful, a little bit more user-friendly going forward, because I know people had some issues, you know, with some of the stuff in the past, but I think now Mary's done a wonderful job, and it's, it's a little bit more user-friendly and it'd be more beneficial to the people in town. So just wanted to mention that. And then again, right off the bat, we'll just thank DPW for all their work tonight and tomorrow, for making sure that everybody can get to work tomorrow. Because obviously, we're, we're in for it. That is it for me. We'll move on to number nine with the Town Manager's Report.
You have my written report in the agenda packet. Just a couple of things to call to your attention. I gave you some additional materials on county equivalency, which is an effort being pushed right now across the, from the COGS, as well as support from the governor's office in order to have the councils of government be treated the same way as a county would at the federal level. That really translates not into bringing back county-level government, but opening the door to very specific grant dollars that the rest of the country is able to take advantage of, because it goes to the county level and does not go to municipalities and states. As the most recent CARES Act round of funding that was provided for COVID relief, there was a specific tranche of that funding that was provided just for counties. Those dollars went to the state under this format. They want to go on to the council of government to distribute to support COVID relief. You also have correspondence that came in from the Connecticut Water Company laying out their arguments for a rate increase that they'll be pursuing before the Public Utility Regulatory Authority in order to address what their capital and operating expenses are. In my report, I alluded to the council governments was going to have a meeting to discuss its 2021 legislative agenda. That meeting took place earlier. I know Christine was in attendance for part of that meeting. For the rest of the council, the focus leads with trash or waste management. That was a significant concern last year. It remains a concern this year, given the fact that Mira is shutting down the Hartford Trash and Energy Plant, and solutions are being sought for how solid waste to be managed in the state outside of simply packing it on the back of a truck and trucking it to Pennsylvania. Dead trees and hydrilla is a natural concern that is also a carryover from last year. Transportation is also an important area of concern, given the fact that the COG is in an area where there's going to be a merger of two transit districts, the nine-town transit that currently services Clinton and the other shoreline communities, and then middle-town area transit. So they, part of that, the success of that merger is going to be a function of DOT making some funding commitments. And so the goal is try and make sure that those dollars flow. Included in the, the response was also a look at affordable housing. That's probably going to be a topic of conversation up in Hartford. Desegregate Connecticut has its own agenda. CCM also articulated an agenda on affordable housing. And the COG is also trying to figure out how affordable housing production can be increased in Connecticut, but also trying to strike some sense of balance between urban and suburban. But all, and also recognize there are infrastructure issues. Obviously, there's unique infrastructure issues in Clinton with sewers being a potential issue that get to levels, getting to levels of density and development. Reutilization is always on the agenda for the COG. And then in response to COVID, the state support for high-speed internet in order to accelerate both distance learning and distance work. Also, on the trash front, there has been a discussion going on with DEEP for a number of months on different ideas in terms of how the state could address diverting solid waste from going into landfills. That state-level discussion is going to continue, and then there'll be some level of a report that comes out in January, and I know there's some interest in that. The study groups were looking at extended producer responsibility. This is pretty much like what the current fees that go in for paint and electronics, food scrap recycling, increased recycling opportunities, and then unit-based pricing or pay-as-you-throw. It seems as if pay-as-you-throw has the greatest degree of interest out of the DEEP commissioner. That would be a bit of a change in terms of how trash is handled in Clinton. The need for a transfer station would be maintained if all of the other recycling and other notions also come through. Clearly, these are major public policy changes that are going to require state legislation. And I think DEEP acknowledged is that there's going to have to be some funding in the equation to make things work, either in the marketplace, to take the waste and handle some of these smaller areas, and then to also support municipalities and what they're trying to do from a recycling standpoint. And, there's the report, there's the benefit.
Thanks, Carl. Any questions for Carl? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to number 10, which is the Town Council Committee Liaison Reports.
Mr. Chairman, it's Tim. I have a report on the Economic Development Commission that met last week.
Okay.
The, the meeting was primarily a discussion between the STEM program that has been discussed and actually what steps have been taken so far. And Marco, our Assistant Superintendent, gave a presentation, and it was interesting, for me at least, to note that the STEM program actually is starting in Joel, has already started at Joel, not just at the high school level. So the plans are for this program to start at the very beginning stages of a young boy or girl's education. There's a new math curriculum that they are embarking on, very different from the normal math that you would be thinking of. And so they're really doing a great job. There's classes like robotics, coding, computer design, and all of these are now, in one form or another, being implemented in the Clinton public school system. So I, I was taken back, because I had no idea it had already moved to that level. So that's a good sign, and and it's, it's good for our, our children. It's good for our parents, and I hope it continues.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have inland wetlands just quickly here, if I can find it. The, yeah, inland wetlands commission met on December the 1st. They tabled the election of their officers and the review of their bylaws until January 5th. They rendered decisions and made conditional approvals of Indian River Landing and the Morgan School Embankment and Storm Drainage Work and Repairs Planning and Zoning had a public hearing on December the 7th, and its monthly meeting on December 14th. They elected Mike Rossi as chair, re-elected Mike Rossi as chair, and Mike Nudson as vice chair. They approved with condition- They approved with conditions the construction of a 9,000-square-foot residential building on 73 West Main Street. They adopted and made effective January 11th, 2021, the amendment to zoning regulations, transit-oriented district, the TODO, from six to seven foot, I don't think you probably need to know that. And then an amendment to the zoning regulations, contractor business and storage yards has been seen as a compromise between the concerns of both contractor yard operations and residential properties. And then they approved the remodels of an existing structure for the Garden Center in Greenhouse, 58 West Main Street, Van Wildgen's Garden Center. I believe that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Dennis, now I'm in here, Police Commission met two days ago, Monday night. Overall, I'm glad to report that their budgeting is going right on schedule. They have no particular budget areas that are concerned right now. As a matter of fact, I don't want to jinx them, but their overtime budget right now for six months is approximately only 32% of what was valued, budgeted for. So they're doing quite an excellent job controlling the overtime. Also, I might like to bring up that the police are in the, in the process right now. They are testing various cameras, as you know, due to the recent legislative passage of laws that all municipalities will be required to eventually have cameras in the vehicles and on the officers. At the present time, our department is testing two different companies and two different types. One, I think, is vehicles only, and another one is actually on the individual himself. The chief said he will get back to us with the results shortly. They won't be cheap, that's for sure. I think one of the contracts or an idea of de-approximate cost would be in a neighborhood of 250 to 270,000 dollars for a five-year contract. And most of that, as we knew, I think you knew from before, when we were on radio communications committees and various camera committees, that a lot of this cost goes to the storage more than the cameras and the physical cameras themselves. It's the storage and iCloud and what have you that cost the most. And so anyway, that's something that we're going to have to address, of course, in the near future, within at least a year, I would think. At the present time, they are also going through their promotion and hiring process. From what I understood the other night, we've only have one candidate that, for captain, and that is our Sergeant DePietro here, one of our own police, he's a sergeant here. And the explanation, of course, and to make sure that people don't get too excited about the fact that we are trying to develop within the department motivation and moving up the ranks. And although there's only just one gentleman, the chief has assured us that the sergeant is very well-qualified to move into that step. So I believe they will be making that announcement shortly. And of course, you know, that then just bumps down everything else. There are three corporals that will be going for his sergeant spot, and I think they're in the process in doing that, well, I, with the storm, I don't know if they continue tonight or not. And then there'll be three officers for the corporal spots. At the end, to fill the one vacancy in the department, we're lucky again to be able to hire a retired state police officer that just retired just a short time ago. I believe, from what I heard the other day, he lives right across the border, right here in Cowling, Work. So he'll be very accessible to the town. And that, again, is going to save us a lot of money in training and time and whatever. So we are fortunate again to pick up on that avenue. My final thing I'd like to say is that the department received several letters of thanks from various members of the community, but I would like to make two things of note. We've had two incidents within this town recently where our police officers have just performed outstandingly. I hope I say the officer's name, Wgorzik, answered a medical situation. And in fact, the chief said, at the end, he actually saved the individual's life during CPR as quickly as he did in his response to the situation. A second incident, almost of the similar nature, Corporal Frey and Officer Caruso. They too responded to a medical response, emergency. And because of their quick action with CPR, it is indicative that he probably, they probably saved that individual's life. So I just wanted to get that on the record, and I know so many times we hear so much negative about the police officers throughout this country, state, wherever. And I just wanted to, once in a while, you have to bring up the good points. I think we in Clinton, at this particular moment, probably have one of the finest police forces in the area, and I just wanted to give them their due. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. So we are good. We will now move on to item number 11, which is the executive session personnel pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206A. We will go into executive session, motion to go in and invite Paul, Mary, and Peggy Adler.
We'll make that motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Stain? Thank you. Session, and we will look for enjoyment, and before we do, we are not meeting before Christmas. So Merry Christmas to everyone. Hopefully, everybody has a safe and happy, healthy holiday.
Merry Christmas.
Tim Guerra's birthday coming up.
Please?
It's Tim Guerra's birthday coming up.
Oh, my God.
Birthday to me.
It's the 29th.
Well, happy birthday.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
What's your 49, Tim?
29.
I'll go one more, 50.
And holding, and holding.
Motion to adjourn? Second. Thank you again, everyone. Happy holidays. Merry Christmas.
Adios.
Merry Christmas.
All right.